My name is Tom Currier. I work for Mastot in Boston. I'm pinching tonight for your project manager with Mastot Herman Nieto. He has trouble driving at night. He's even older than I am. So, I volunteered to take the meeting tonight. I do a lot of these myself as well. We have a good group here tonight. We're here to talk about Royalston Road reconstruction project. It's 2.65 miles. And it's roughly 5.2 million in preliminary design estimated total federal participating construction cost. But what we're doing tonight is a design public hearing. We're here at the behest of our chief engineer Patty Leavenworth in Boston. And I have a group with me tonight, starting at the far end is Mr. David Frazier of Arlington Typing and Mailing. And he's capturing a verbatim transcript of tonight's meeting as a legal requirement for design public hearings. All the federally funded projects put out by Mastot have to go through this little step we're doing tonight. But the primary purpose is to present the project to you and to get your input. That's the most important part. We want to hear what you have to say about what we're working on, what you think of the ideas. If you don't like them, by all means, speak up. If you like them, speak up. Nobody knows the road better than you. And we want to hear what you have to say. And I think we'll all end up with a better project, you know, having heard what you have to say. So to carry on, that lovely person down there is Shirley Shiver. She's our municipal right-of-way representative, another Mastot person. And then the two Fussin' O'Neill Engineering Firm people who are here tonight, they're the folks designing this. We have Nicola Pointe and Reika Corleparra. And this is Jeff Hoyansky of our District Two office in North Hampton. He is the Assistant Projects Engineer for Mastot. So, the agenda, how it's going to work is...
How do you spell his name?
Shirley is going to do her... She has a statement to read to you to briefly explain how the municipal right-of-way process works. Her function with Mastot is to help the towns that we do work with acquire the necessary rights to property and do it in a way that's compliant with federal guidelines. This is a town of Templeton roadway, so the town will be doing the takings required. And Shirley's going to help make sure the town meets all the requirements necessary. So Shirley, do you want to do your right-of-way thing?
Good evening, everyone. When the Commonwealth acting through its Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division indicated it would accept this $5.2 million project for funding, your municipality accepted certain responsibilities. One of those responsibilities is to acquire all the necessary rights in private and public lands for the design, construction, and implementation of this project. My function is to review and recommend procedures that your municipality will use in acquiring these rights. The procedures must comply with both federal and state regulations. The current design plan indicates that there are 14 permanent easements and 44 temporary easements that are required. Property owners impacted by this project will be contacted by your municipal officials. They will present the proposed impacts to each owner and discuss the methods with which they may acquire the needed rights for the project. Frequently municipalities will appeal for donations to minimize the cost for your community. However, donations are not required, and property owners are entitled to appraisal, review appraisal, and just compensation. Right-of-way documents will be provided to each owner to help them understand the acquisition process and how the project affects their property. Affected property owners' rights are protected under our Massachusetts General Law, primarily Chapter 79. And because this project is receiving federal funds, the property owner's rights are further defined under Title III of the Real Property Acts of 1970 as amended. I will be happy to answer any general questions concerning right-of-way activities during this open forum, and I will be available after the hearing for any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. We have a set of preliminary right-of-way plans here on the dais that we can get into after the formal part of the meeting's done, if you want to look at your particular property and see what's planned. And I also want to mention before I forget that this meeting was advertised in the Gardner News and the Telegram and Gazette on November 28th and again on December 5th in both papers. Just wanted to get that out of the way. And with that done, I will ask Fussin' O'Neill to do their technical presentation.
Sure. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Tom. You know, before we start, if you could just hold any questions, I know that there's a lot of material here, you'll see. Just hold any questions if you could to the very end. Because honestly, that's what's the most important part, is hearing your feedback. My name is Nicola Pointe. I'm the project manager for Fussin' O'Neill. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts. I've been doing this for Fussin' O'Neill for about 11 years. And I had prior experience working with Mass Highway at the time, before that. With me is Reika Corleparra. She is one of our many project engineers. It is a large team that is working on this. It is a long stretch of roadway with some interesting challenges, which you'll see as we go through this. We are working for you, Fussin' O'Neill. We are your consultant. We do not work for Mastot, so I wanted to make that clear, that we're here for you, representing you. You know, we're this office, this project is being designed at our Springfield office. Fussin' O'Neill is a multi-disciplined firm, 350 employees, all in-house services, so drainage, stormwater, structural, and obviously transportation and traffic. So there's a lot of different challenges with Royalston Road. That's very unique, and that our firm is kind of set up to handle, to address, you know, that you're going to have a lot of drainage problems, which you'll see, and which I'm sure all aware about. Flooding, there's environmental resource areas that we need to be very sensitive about. And this all makes for a very interesting project, and we are very happy to be able to help the town out. So with that being said, we'll go through quick agenda, and I want to try to be as brief as possible, because really, you know, you're the people who have to deal with this roadway day in and day out. And understanding your concerns and kind of what you guys know about the area, it's going to help us make this a better project in the end. So it's, I really just want to try to keep this brief. We'll go over a quick history of kind of how this project got started, why we're here now, the goals, what we're really trying to accomplish, obviously the existing conditions. There'll be, most people are probably pretty aware of them. But just so we can make sure that you understand our understanding of the project, the proposed conditions, and obviously questions. So the project begins, if you're not familiar, it does begin at the Phillipsen Town Line near Colony Road there, and then it kind of heads due south at the intersection and ends at 202. So it is quite a lengthy project, hence the larger cost. But it's really one that, you know, we looked at trying to separate and phasing the project, but from a constructability standpoint, it really didn't make sense to disrupt this roadway more than once. So, given that in mind, it was determined to kind of look at this whole corridor as one segment. So the project actually started in 2002 when Bud Chase sent a letter to then John Hoy up at Mass Highway in District Two looking for funding assistance. And even in 2002, the roadway wasn't in great shape. So the town was aware of that, something needed to happen here. And then there was this gap of 14 years where, you know, the District Two at the time, or Mass DOT at the time, said, you know, that this project really isn't eligible for funding. So, you know, see what the town can do with their own funds in the meantime. And really, nothing happened until 2016, when we tried to re-initiate the project with DOT. And, you know, within that 14 years, the road, you know, really had a lot of issues. The DPW, or the Highway Department, was spending a lot of money every year patching potholes, pulling out boulders, repairing culverts. And so that's when it was really decided, hey, let's try to look at this again and fix this once and for all. So in 2016, we submitted and got approved by Mastot for funding. And then a few short months later, we went and submitted our pre-25% design to DOT. And that's kind of really just the earliest stages of conceptualization of the project. And then basically, eight months, nine months later, in February of 2017, we had our full preliminary design submission, which is what you're seeing today. And between, you're wondering, hey, what, you know, 2017, that was, you know, almost two years, February 2017, that was almost two years ago. What was the big holdup? In between that time, there were a lot of coordination back and forth with the state, with town officials, trying to revise costs, look at different alternatives to make this the most efficient project we possibly can, get the most bang for the buck. So there's a response to comments, some revising of the design, until meetings, and that kind of brings us to where we are today. And I'd be more than happy to go into this history if anyone else cares later, which is more than happy. So, you know, why are we here? What is the goal of this project? And some might think, oh, you know, the road's beat up, it's not going to be safe, and we're here fixing the road. Well, that may be true. However, we've got to think, you know, wider, wider than that. You know, take a thousand-foot look at Royalston Road, and what is its functioning? What is its prime role? And it's, you know, the prime role of Royalston Road is a lot different than the prime role of, you know, in Baldwinville, or Bridge Street, for example, where there's a lot more pedestrians and people walking, you know. So we really want to make sure that we're looking at Royalston Road in kind of a holistic sense, making sure that we're addressing all of the needs of Royalston Road. So, obviously, improving the pavement condition, that's kind of our number-one goal. We want to make sure that the Highway Department isn't out there every spring, you know, putting cold patch and hot patch down. Number two, provide wider shoulders and better bicycle and pedestrian accommodation. Although there's, you know, not a lot of people walk on the road, there's still times when people do walk, and we want to have some sort of usable space for them to walk, you know, whether it's, in this case, it won't be a sidewalk, but it's a wider shoulder. Also, that allows more snow storage as well, and then the bicycle facility as well. Number three is the culverts and the flooding problems that are on Royalston Road. That's a huge problem, and you'll see some photos that we have of culverts that have failed, culverts that have overtopped. So stormwater management, I guess, is the goal there, is how can we do to improve that? Improving safety for all users. And when we think of all users, it's not just, oh, the person driving in their car. There is 9% of the traffic, or call it 10%, on the traffic is truck traffic on Royalston Road. So looking at Route 68 as a freight corridor, and I, we kind of threw the definition of, you know, what is transportation in the Commonwealth? And it's, if you look at the actual definition, it's to provide safe, efficient, reliable, and sustainable movement of persons and goods. So, looking at the freight industry and trucks, right now, trucks, they don't go down Route 68 because they're of load shifting. There's just, it's...
Are you kidding? We've got trucks in here, man.
Well, trucks...
Little ones, and you name it, we've got it.
See, that's why we're doing this today.
There you go. We know there's trucks, there's at least 10%.
If you're saying there's no trucks, well, I'm going to tell you something. There's trucks.
Can you, can you give us your, later on, when we get into the formal...
My name is Carol Garvey, I live on 91 Royalston Road.
G-A-R-V-E-Y?
Been there for 42 years, and this is the first time they're ever going to do anything to think about fixing this road.
Bingo.
Okay. And the patching, well, they just got through doing it, and they did every other hole on it.
Garvey, can you, is it G-A-R-V-E-Y?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So in the future, everybody, we need to speak one at a time, so our transcriptionists can pick it up. So, when this gentleman's...
I just yelled it.
I know it.
Because those things are...
Typically, we love that, but let me just finish. So, the way this has to work, so that we all hear each other...
I just got spontaneous.
I understand. It's a very emotional experience.
It is. It's empowering.
So in the future, when we finish with our presentation, then we'll ask for your input, and then if, when you come up, or speak into the microphone, or just speak loudly, if you could just state your affiliation, do you live on the road, do you live in town? And if you could spell your last name for the transcriptionist. Just for future reference, everybody. So, continue, Nick. As you were saying...
Glad we got him riled up, Tom.
I know.
That's good. That's what we want. We want the feedback.
That's right.
So, the trucks, we're going to, the trucks, we're going to talk more about the trucks. There's a slide for that, I promise. So, but the trucking industry, whether you want to, whether you hate trucks or like trucks, it doesn't matter, they're transportation equity for everybody. They have to get, we have to get goods to Phillipsen and Royalston to the north. You know, we have to accommodate all users, and that's why that's bold and important there. So that's something we need to focus on. Update the infrastructure, the guardrails, some of them are completely falling off or nonexistent. Obviously, signs and markings, that type of thing. Clearing vegetation and stabilizing the roadside slopes, there's a couple of near-slope failures out there, so we're going to address that. Improving some of the vertical geometry of the road, the profile, which does a multitude of things, which we'll all get into in a bit. And then obviously, limit the disturbance to environmental resources and private property. This is not a project where we're going to, you know, go through and add four lanes and take out people's property. We want to be very sensitive to that and make sure our design is as such that, you know, we're very sensitive to private property and environmental resources, especially up at the Four Corners. It's really a lot of environmental resources in that region. So here's the existing conditions. Obviously, you can see here, this is the extremely poor pavement condition. And the reason why the pavement, it looks like this, and this is a very telltale sign of a certain type of failure, when you see it kind of delaminate like this, is the lack of drainage, of roadside drainage. And if you actually look, let me see if I can point it out. This photo here shows it really well, is that you have a steep slope here where water basically flows off of the hill to the gutter or edge of the roadway, and it really has nowhere to go except for infiltrate into that, into that shoulder. And so what happens is, this condition right here, is the water sits right along the edge, it doesn't really have anywhere to go, other than along the profile of the roadway at a very slow rate. And then it basically degrades the subbase soil materials, and then you get cracking and failure along the edge. So, this is apparent throughout the whole corridor in many spots, and something we're really going to try to address. And it's a long, this is a long-term improvement. That's going to, that's going to really, you know, we could go through here, pave the road, or reconstruct the road, not touch the sides of the roadway, the slopes, and it might last five years. But if we don't address that this shoulder condition, you're going to be, we're going to be right back here in five years after you pave it. So it's very important that we look at this. Here's some more of, you know, pavement failure. On the bottom here, you can see obviously some heavy ponding on the roadway, so we really want to try to address that. Right here is an actual kind of flatter section of Royalston Road. So, I talked about vertical geometric improvements. We're going to add some profile here to make sure the water is getting into the low points of the roadway and off of the roadway. And then here's, here's, we're going to talk about truck traffic. So, you know, Route 6, it is designated as Route 68, and there is 10% of truck traffic. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot, but just to give you a comparison, on some of the heavier-traveled roadways, projects that, you know, we have experienced in Western Mass, you know, 20,000 vehicles a day, we don't even get near as high as 10%. Sometimes we see this number around 5% truck traffic. So to have double that, you're absolutely correct, there is a lot of trucks on here. And it's concerning that they're actually, you know, using this roadway in the condition that it's in. So we really want to try to make sure that, you know, there's safety concerns about load shiftings. I mean, we've got, we've heard feedback from the trucking industry and Highway Department and others on this matter. So, something we definitely want to address. Here we go. Here's a, here's a great photo. Norcross Brook, this was last year, I think it was, last spring maybe, when Norcross Brook just overtopped Royalston Road. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't that long ago. I can't remember when I sent those to you, Jeff, but, and so this, this can't happen, right? This is not a reliable infrastructure network. So of course, addressing this is going to be part of this project, full replacement of the Norcross Brook culvert, you know, full hydrologic, hydrologic study, excuse me, to make sure that this doesn't happen in the future.
Are you doing both? Is that, that, oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
We'll get to everything.
I'm sorry.
We'll be here till 3:00 AM at the rate Nick's going.
I know. They do this to me all the time. They always like, go faster, go faster. All right, I'm going to go. So here's the, you can see the head walls collapsed here, so there's all kinds of problems here. These photos obviously show that. I won't go, I'll stop, keep it at that. So here are the proposed conditions. Current project, the raw estimated cost is around $4 million. That's what the contractor might bid it around. But there's other costs, such as utility relocations, police details, contingencies. We're at around, you know, 5, 5.2. It's still preliminary, so keep this in mind. This is 25% design. So we still have a lot of refining of this cost to do. Here's just kind of a typical section of the roadway and what we're proposing to do. So, the proposed roadway is going to be reclaimed. So basically, that's grinding up of the existing roadway, mixing it with existing soil, and adding in new virgin material, stabilizing it, regrading it as a new base. So basically, you're reclaim, recycling the pavement, and then paving, brand-new pavement on top of it. So basically, it's a more sustainable and efficient, as well as low-cost, full-depth reconstruction. It's a method of full-depth reconstruction. Basically, the pavement design of this roadway is 50 years. Will you not touch this road for 50 years? Of course not. But technically, the subbase of this pavement should last, is designed as 50-year pavement. And you can see, we talked about the ponding, and here's those slopes on the shoulders, the addition of grass swales, drainage ditches along the roadway. That is going to significantly improve stormwater management and the eroding and the cracking at the edge. And then obviously, placement of guardrails, just to give you kind of a brief view of what the roadway is going to look like here. Talked about this before, replacing of, I would say, 90% of the cross culverts that run underneath Royalston Road, connecting low points and drainage areas as well as wetland resources. I would say most of them have failed. We have inspected all of them. So 90% are going to be replaced with brand-new pipes, concrete headwalls. Tough to see this detail up here, but this is the method of replacement here. So there'll be a new nice concrete, precast concrete headwall, stone splash pad at the end to really stabilize and, what's the word I'm looking for? Act as an energy dissipator of the water to not erode the areas around it. And then obviously, stabilizing the top of the slopes and guardrail installation. So, this is a really important improvement as part of this project. A lot of these pipes right now, it's tough to see on the plans, but they're old metal pipes that are collapsed and completely delaminated out and rusted out inside, and really not acting as they should. So here's a picture of, this is a very similar project that was completed in Lee, actually. Tieringham Road out in Lee and the Berkshires. Very similar context of Royalston Road, serves similar amount of traffic, has similar site conditions with embankment on one side and a fill slope on the other side with environmental resources. And so, this right here is a gravity retaining wall. It's actually rock-filled baskets, we call them gabion walls. And on Royalston Road, they might not be gabion walls, but we are going to be placing a number, three actually, sections of gravity retaining walls to stabilize the roadside slope, to prevent further erosion of the hillside, as well as provide room for the widening of the shoulders. It's kind of an incidental measure that we're going to be installing as due to the widening. But this roadway is very similar in context of what Royalston Road is going to look like. You're going to have a milling mulch under the guardrail, new guardrails, stabilized slope, you can't see here, but this is actually geotextile under here, which we're also installing on Royalston Road, and then a wall. So just to give you an idea, these walls are generally at the very end of Royalston Road, near 202 is where these are going to be installed. We talked about the culverts. This is the culvert replacement at Norcross Brook. There is one other large culvert that we are replacing that's going to be similar to this. Down up towards, it's at the beginning, almost in the Phillipsen Line.
Yeah.
The Highway Department put in a plastic pipe a number of years ago, but if you go out there, there's a lot of Beaver, it's out near Beaver Brook, basically, in that area, down near kind of the flats.
At the end of the flats.
Yeah, exactly. Right at the end of the flats. So if you actually go out there, you look at that pipe, that pipe is almost submerged, you know, 3/4, 75%.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent of the time.
There's a crowd here, doesn't even travel at it.
So, yeah, so that's, it's quite a bit, it's at the Phillipsen Line, so we're looking at that. This is going to be a precast box culvert, 18 feet wide is the preliminary with estimate, so it's going to be much larger, similar to what you see up in this picture here. This is the existing culvert. You can see the head wall is starting to collapse there, and actually, on the other side, it's fully collapsed. It will not be arched like this, but it'll be a very similar span and have similar wing walls and grating and as such. So just to give you an idea of that. It's a very sensitive environmental area, there's environmental resources and wetlands all through here, so...
While you're on the culvert, I got a question.
We'll get to it later.
Right at the end. Almost, I have two more slides.
I promise you. We'll get to everybody's questions as soon as Nick's finished.
And so basically, just finish up real quick. Is a lot of you probably here because you're wondering, hey, what's going to happen to my property? What, you know, what's, what are they doing in front of my front yard? And Shirley kind of talked about this before, about the number of easements. Just to quickly touch, and we can go over all of these, and I'm sure that's a lot of your questions. So the easements that are being discussed, they're primarily drainage easements. So what that means is, you may or may not have an existing pipe that might come out onto your property, or some sort of drainage structure. The easements that we're going to be installing is going to be replacement or the betterment of those structures in your current property. These are going to be drainage easements, so they're not going to affect the use of your property than really what it is now. It just allows the town to come out and do maintenance in perpetuity, basically, to clean out structures, repair any slopes that may have eroded. So these aren't, these aren't full takings. They are, they are permanent in nature, and Shirley might be able to elaborate on the type of compensation that's involved with that. But none of, this project is not proposing to wipe out anyone's front yard or fully take your property. These are not the kind of easements. I would say 90% of the properties have temporary easements, which basically means a right for a construction worker to be on your front yard to repair your driveway, or to put new grass seed, or turf establishment, basically, and general construction grading. So, temporary in nature, basically reestablished to what it was prior. So I just wanted to, and we can talk more about any easements, I'd be more than happy to, but I felt like it was worth, worth of a slide here. And then now, have at it, we'd love to hear your comments and really...
Whoa, just a minute. Thank you very much, Nick. That's great. Now's the time for us to get all the information that you have. I'd just like to offer the first slots to any elected officials who'd like to, that may be in the room that want to speak first to the project. No? Okay, so let's open it up. Show of hands. I'll be your master of ceremonies, and this handsome fellow with the red hair is going to go first. If you could just state your name for our transcriptionist.
Richard Tolman.
Spell your last name.
T-O-L-M-A-N.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Tolman.
Has anybody considered the old Royalston Road, the ones that we live on? The culvert's collapsing.
See if I can zoom, let me zoom to that here. So, we're doing a little bit of work at Old Royalston Road, basically only in the vicinity of South Royalston Road. So the intersection where Old Royalston Road kind of comes out, we are cleaning up that geometry there, and I can show you what that looks like.
Because there's a culvert there.
There is a culvert. We're placing the cross culvert on Royalston Road, but not, so actually, Norcross Brook meanders around and goes underneath Old Royalston Road. And Gavin Road.
So is Old Royalston Road in the limits of the project, Nick?
I will show you, clarify this. There's a lot of Royalston's roads in this project. There's South Royalston Road, Royalston Road, Old Royalston Road. Keep going.
It's collapsing now.
Oh, yeah.
The town's got to fix it, somebody.
So what Nick is trying to show us is that map behind us on the blackboard.
If I zoom in here, Reika, a button. This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, you had it, but you didn't go to the right.
I had, yeah. So here's what's happening, and we probably should have talked about this.
Well, there it is.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's why I got Reika here. Reika should be running this. So we are cleaning up the geometry here to make it a little more intuitive for users... So we are cleaning up the geometry here to make it a little more intuitive for users.
Will that clean up the brook?
So the brook, there's one crossing here. That's, that actually is an intermittent stream. It's defined as intermittent. But it does see a decent amount of flow. Here's Norcross Brook. We are not touching Norcross Brook, this culvert right here as part of this project. This culvert, we are not, yeah, we're not touching that unfortunately.
You're not going to clean that one up?
I mean, if, that's certainly open for discussion with the town if that's, we want to be, that's, it's a great comment, so.
You're not planning on putting an island there?
So this is, this is mostly just a, it's not, it's not a raised island. It's mostly a grassed, basically just a grassed area. So we actually ran the truck movements and this accommodates the largest of the large, we call them, it's a WB sixty-seven, basically a sixty-seven foot trailer. That is the designed vehicle.
Is yours that big?
Yeah.
Sixty-seven feet?
Well, with the truck pulling it, right?
That's the biggest truck on the road, basically.
Fifty-three foot box.
Okay, yeah.
We can, we will certainly confirm, I'll confirm with the engineers at the office to make sure that that, that turning movement, you're talking about the right turn going into Old Royalston?
Yeah, there's no need for that even being there. It's a waste of money. It'll get dug up in the.
Oh, the island, you mean, yeah.
Basically, the idea is to reduce the wide-open pavement area that's now. It's basically, it's too much open pavement.
So I just wanted to point out that Mr. Tolman's comment is a very good one and perhaps we need to revisit that culvert that's just outside the limits of the project. If there's funding available, maybe we can expand the limits a little bit. Yes, sir, your number two.
Michael Hamel, three eighty-one Royalston Road, H-A-M-E-L. So there's also a culvert on Gavin Road. And when you, the photos that he showed when that flooded out last year, the one on Gavin is downstream and that was overwhelmed as well. So if we replace that one culvert and don't replace the one at Gavin, I don't think we're going to achieve what we need to achieve on Norcross Brook.
No, good con, so basically as part of the, and so the Army Corps, Corps of Engineers has to be involved in this. And so as part of the study that we need to undertake is to make sure that the downstream condition isn't impacted by widening and allowing more water through. So if that is the case, that happens on Gavin Road, then we will certainly address it. And I'm glad you brought it to our attention because.
Is it in the boundary, though, or no?
I don't think that the crossing of the Norcross Brook is actually on the plans. I don't think it's in our. We can, we're certainly going to have to look at it and be, it's a good comment. Let's see where.
It sounds like the technical lift, the heavy lift on this job is to do the hydrology.
It's the next, the next stage, exactly.
That's right. Big-time flooding issues out here.
And the big thing is, is, you know, we have to be careful about the, as much as, you know, people might get mad, is there's, there is environmental resources, so the Army Corps of Engineers requires us to make sure there's a certain openness ratio in the culvert to allow critters to be able to cross as well. So all of those factors are ongoing discussions with Army Corps and the hydrologic study that is going to be taking place at seventy-five percent design.
Now, there's a lot of you here. You took the time to come out. Come on, let's have some comments. How about you, sir?
Mark Berio, seventy-five Royalston Road. Can you talk in some detail about the intersection with Route two oh two?
Sure.
Are you changing the angle of that intersection at all?
So Route two oh two, we actually received a comment from MassDOT asking us to look at teeing this up a little bit more to provide better sight distance. And the great thing about that comment is that there's right-of-way to do that, so we can do that. It is feasible. The question that we just need to kind of look at and go through and run some numbers is at what cost? And is the cost benefit worth us at making that realignment as part of this project? Only, and I only say that due to typically what we look at is if there's any accident trends or accident history there. And obviously if, you know, and it's clear that if you're sitting at that stop bar and you want to get on the two oh two, you're kind of looking over your shoulder to make sure there's no cars coming and it's not, it's a bad skew. And so we would typically see accidents there. There hasn't, there is zero accident trends within the past three years that have showed up there. So not saying that we wouldn't realign it. We're not going to look, keep looking at doing that. But it's something that we just need to consider. Is there a value in, you know, because it's a lot of work to basically rip up the entire roadway, realign it and move it there. Certainly it's on our radar and something that we are going to have to be continued talks with MassDOT on that. If there's, if people have, have noticed, say it again, Tom?
What are the traffic volumes out here?
I think the ADT is.
So it's really low?
It's low, yeah.
That's why you have no accidents, right?
Right, right. The rate's low, too.
But it's a great improvement to make.
Yeah, absolutely. Boston traffic has commented on that and and it's, it's not, it's not a big undertaking.
Can you, I'm sorry, our transcriptionist is going crazy here with the. So, great, all these have been terrific comments and that's what we're looking for is your input, so. Yes, sir?
Bob Mitchell, three twenty-six Royalston Road, M-I-T-C-H-E-L-L. I'm looking at this thing and it says that you're going to begin the town at the town line. So having lived on the road forever, I wonder why this happens again? Because the last time they did anything to the road, they started at the town line and they went to the fernal school. Not a single person in Templeland lives on that stretch of road. It was the last piece of road done. And I just don't understand why we can't start at the beginning. Makes sense to me to start at the beginning.
In Phillips, didn't you mean?
At two oh two.
Set it right there.
The town line is on the other end.
Right.
Town line is at the brook, so what happened?
We're doing from that point to the other point. We're doing the whole thing.
Right, but you're starting at the brook, so, you know, if it takes you a year to get up to fernal school, that's a year that, you know.
Let me explain. We don't tell the contractor, unless there's a really good reason. We don't dictate to the contractor which end they should begin it and which they should finish it. We don't order their work for them because it drives the cost up. So they may start at two oh two. That's just, that's just an English.
Right, when we say start, it's mostly the internal language of how our stationing, so we can identify points for.
Typically started at, you know, for the drawings.
Okay, I was just a little.
No, it's so.
That's the only part of the road that's even almost passing.
So like, they're going to, I can pretty much.
I'm glad you brought it up. I'm sure a lot of people have.
The contractor's going to go through, he's going to do all the drainage in one shot altogether. And then that's probably going to take him up until the winter. He'll shut down for the winter. Then he's going to come back in the springtime, do his clearing, his tree clearing, and then he'll reclaim the road on, it'll be all in one, you know, a month or two period that that'll happen. And I'm guessing that the wall stabilization and the culvert will be happening at that, the larger culverts will be happening at that time as well. This isn't, they start at one end in a year and then two years later he's at the, guarantee you that that won't happen.
What year are they supposed to start this?
Well, that's a very good question because currently this isn't funded, so it's not programmed. No, but this is, this is a big milestone. What we're doing tonight is a big milestone in the process. So what the town needs to do with our help, with MassDOT's help, is to convince the planning organization that governs how the money's spent in this region to fund this. So that's the next step. And your engineers will continue to advance the design, so when this gets slipped into twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three, boom, it's ready to go.
My town is going to be.
You're the youngest guy in the room. You're going to be here for a long time. Let me, let me go around and get some, some new individuals before we repeat the same folks again. How's that? But we'll get to everybody until you're sick and tired of us and then we'll, only then will we leave. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm Adam LaMonte. I'm the municipal manhood fellow in the borders selectmen's office.
Can't hear you.
Adam LaMonte, I work in the borders selectmen's office. I just have.
Oh, you're the young man, huh?
That's, he's the young guy.
Nice seeing you. I'm so glad you were representing the selectmen and everybody.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. But I'm actually here because we've received a correspondence in our office from the postmaster of Baldwinville, Christian Short. And she said, hello, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting. I'm the Baldwinville postmaster and I'm responsible for the delivery of mail on Royalston Road. I'm very glad to hear conversation is opening up about the repaving of this road. The road condition has been deteriorating at a rapid pace for some time now. I've been monitoring and assessing its risk to my employees and the United States Postal Service equipment and vehicles. During tonight's discussions, please keep in mind a few points. United States Postal Service line of travel is one-way, meaning we do not go up and then back down this road. Mailboxes must continue to only be placed all on the same side of the street they currently are on. If a new design of the road is planned, it must accommodate for United States Postal Service current delivery method. I was informed that a bike lane might be added on the same side of the road United States Postal Service delivers mail. Please consider the other side of the road for this new addition. It would be the safest choice. There is one more point I'd like to add. The road currently has running water on it constantly. I'm hoping that a drainage system of, which we already covered, of some sort is included in the conversation. I hope this information is helpful. I'd also like to thank you again for getting the ball rolling on the worst road. This was a correspondence. I just wanted to.
It's great. You read that into the record.
So I could give to.
Terrific, David, yeah.
Just for the public record, that's why I wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
So to address the concerns of the postmaster about the bike accommodation that they mentioned, that's just a shoulder. We're adding four-foot shoulders to the eleven-foot lanes so that there's a little room for peds, pedestrians and bicyclists should they choose to ride up the roadway. So that's not going to negatively affect the post boxes, the mailboxes. You know, so they'll still be able to deliver it all to one side.
Yeah, I think she just wanted it on record.
Got to get it on record. That's good. Yes, ma'am? Yeah?
Yes, I have, I'm Raeanne Trifilo, T-R-I-F-I-L-O, two two six Royalston Road. I have a letter that's signed by my neighbor who's unable to attend. She lives at two two seven Royalston Road. Her name is Frances Yakowsky, Y-A-C-K-O-W-S-K-I. And I'm sure after I leave the, after I read this letter, had I put it outside, many people would sign it. What she says is, we strongly support the timely reconstruction of Royalston Road. This road has continuously degraded over many years. Efforts to patch and repair the road when problems arise have met with no success. This road has continued to deteriorate to the point where the only safe portion of the road requires the driver to straddle the center line. This forces the driver to choose between driving in the center of the road, which is a moving violation, or staying in the correct lane and risking their safety attempting to avoid damage and possible injury. Neither of these choices is acceptable. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts must take the safety of this road a top priority. It is neither prudent nor cost-effective to wait for the inevitable accident and loss of life to spare your efforts. Respectfully.
Thank you very much for reading that in.
Drive along.
That's in a nutshell, huh?
You better drive all over the road to miss all the fun home.
So this is a terrific project. This is going to fix all that. Any, here's a new guy. Yes, sir?
Dan Burden, two ninety-nine Royalston Road.
B-U-R?
D-R-N. When you come off of two oh two, that first grade, is that going to be dropped down at all?
Great question. So that's one of the geometric improvements we're talking about.
Because in all reality, you could pull that whole first hill out.
That basically we're taking like three feet off the top of that hill. And we actually were looking at doing that at other places. This was the one location that you identified where we felt it was worth the cost of doing that. This is the one area that we're reclamation, we're really not going to be doing here. It'll be excavators into the roadway, improving that as you go up the hill. It's really bad sight distance. And so we are going to be taking.
You're going south or when it's icy?
Yep.
You're coming to a stop sign on a two-lane road. If you can't stop, you're going right.
You're going right through, right. No, so we're very aware of that and that's, if, we have the profile of the roadway and the drawings and you'll see if you look at the profile or take, like you said, we're chopping the top of the hill off. It'll be a noticeable change.
Okay.
To the maximum extent practical.
A lot of people haven't spoken up. This gentleman keeps raising his hand, so he's got something he's got.
I should have had a follow-up when I had my name on the account tab. H-A-M-E-L, three eighty-one Royalston Road. So my question is, he spoke of a twenty-five percent design and then you mentioned seventy-five percent design as well. It was a little disheartening to hear the year two twenty-three and twenty-four. However, so I want to know what is the percentage of project completion of design that needs to be in place before funding can be approved? What is the percentage and what is the timetable for that to happen? So we don't, so, you know, us as taxpayers can continue to raise our voice and it doesn't get bumped to down the road.
That's a great question.
So here's the, here's the schedule, okay, and Carter's over there and hopefully he's not boiling at me here. So the design schedule is different than the funding schedule, okay, so.
Why don't I answer this?
You want to take a shot at this one?
I'll take a shot at this. The money thing's mine, or MassDOT's. So typically, a project doesn't have to be at any level of design to be scheduled for funding. Some are, some aren't. They're ranked by the MPOs, the Metropolitan Planning Organizations, that the state is divided up into. Jeff, what's the name of the MPO for this region?
Monachuset.
Monachuset MPO. Planning, Monachuset Planning.
Regional Planning Agency, which forms part of the MPO.
So they rank the projects in order of priority, you know, the most urgent ones first and which make the biggest improvement for the money. They have a fixed amount of money they can spend each year, each funding year. And we have a rolling five-year plan for the entire state. And each MPO submits their selection of projects for each year. So to get this project slipped into the stream, to slip into this rolling five-year plan, we need to sell the case to the MPO.
Follow-up?
Follow-up, so, so this is at twenty-five percent design. It could be funded tomorrow if the MPO so chose. It could be funded two years from now. It depends on what else is on the docket for them. But I urge the town to make the case with your engineers' help. And, and we'll get it on there.
So I guess as a follow-up is how, how do we get on the Monachuset MPO's radar? Is it a town responsibility? I'm sure there's several of these, my neighbors, we would all be showing up if that's, if that's what it took. How do we increase our visibility to the MPO?
Well, I think you work with your engineers and they make a presentation at the next tip day, Transportation Improvement Program Day. They have scheduled meetings with all the communities who come in and, and sell their project, basically. They market their project to the MPO.
Jeff, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, and we do highly suggest that the towns represent these meetings. Basically, the MPO meets monthly. Every, beginning of every year is when they start putting together their five-year spending plan over the next five years. And the towns should go to these meetings, really push the project, you know, and tell them that, you know, you're working on it. You know, the first step, they like to have, you know, readiness is a big part of it, so being at twenty-five, having the hearing, moving towards seventy-five, really play a big part in being able, you know, to get it funded and on the tip. So the town should really attend these meetings and really advocate for their project.
When you say the town.
Can you repeat your name again for?
Yes. I'm Raeanne Trifilo. R-A-E hyphen A-N-N. Trifilo is T-R-I-F-I-L-O.
Thank you.
So when you say the town,
Yeah.
this has been going on for a number of years and I understand that it's very difficult. It's a small town. The employees are limited. Our representation, we're losing three selectmen by May, three out of five. The town, does that mean you have to be an elected official? Or as Mr. Hamel says, could some of the townspeople be at those meetings representing the town with the engineer? Because I, I know that it's not always, they're not always able to be at those meetings.
Well, I think they can designate a representative to speak for them, but I don't think they encourage, you know, large groups of private citizens to show up. They need to have the representative officials from a community because it's a, it's a big state, three hundred and fifty-one towns.
And typically, most towns do send their DPW directors or engineers to the meetings to help.
Right.
But the MPO has an elected official.
My name's Phelps. My name's Bob Sozik. I'm your new DPW director. And where I just came on board in October. I will be working with Nick and MassDOT on these meetings and representing the town. And. And, uh-
Speak up. Bob, can you speak up a little bit? Sorry.
I will be, uh, representing you folks for these, uh, meetings. And, um, Adam might be joining me or someone, so-
Yep.
I will hold my word and-
Would there be a way for us to know how those meetings went? For example, would there be minutes read at a selectman's meeting?
We can keep you updated. Um, God.
My name's Carter Terenzini, T E R E N Z I N I. I'm the town administrator here. And first, I'd really like to thank you all for taking some time out of your evening to, uh, to attend. Often, I've been to these kinds of hearings and I have five or six people and it's not quite as oppressive upon the state as, as this room tonight, I know is. Uh, we are, uh, one, uh, as we get back into being able to attend the MPO meetings, uh, we will have the minutes of those meetings available. And with our new website, uh, that we're hoping to launch in the next four months or so, uh, we have an element on it, uh, called, uh, Major Planning and Construction Projects. This project will have a page, uh, where you can subscribe to any updates, uh, by email. So that when we get those minutes, we'll scan them, we'll put them on the web, and if you've signed up for it, it will, uh, come out, uh, to you. We'll do everything else that we can. I think you all got, uh, we went a little bit above and beyond of what we'd like to do. Uh, we did more than the notice that was published and on the web. You all got, uh, the invite in your mail from us and that's, we'll continue with doing that. Uh, these projects are, are very difficult. They're very expensive, uh, and it takes a long time to get the right money sometimes. Critical pieces, uh, we have to get to seventy-five percent design before we can truly start the appraisal and acquisition process. You'll all get a letter from us, uh, over the next month or so, uh, to, uh, start our compliance with the Federal Uniform Acquisition Act. I worked with Sheri on that a little bit today. Um, and she and I were kinda joking about a, a project that, uh, we did in Spencer that took, I don't even wanna scare you with how many years it took, but by having the right-of-way dealt with, by having the plans, there was a project, uh, opportunity that fell out, uh, from another region. And they were able to capture those dollars and move it in. So it's not just, it's about being on your tip, about being plan-ready, right-of-way ready, and then talking with the senators, talking with MRPC, and whenever there's public meetings, uh, we'll make sure that we keep you tuned into that. Uh, and again, thanks for, for coming out. And I'm, I'm really serious. Thank you all for taking some of your time because these rooms are often pretty empty. Thanks, folks.
Thanks very much, Carter. That's exactly what you need. And, uh, you get this ready. If there's an op, if, if somebody else doesn't have their project ready, they, that gets pulled and this can be slipped into place. So you're off to a great start. You've got a great firm working for you. It is a very expensive process. Uh, these designs are expensive. They take a lot of time and effort. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Carol Garvey, ninety-one Royalston Road, Ballinville, Mass. I wanna thank you all for coming and putting the carrot in front of us so we can chase it. Right? Uh, being facetious because that's what you're doing right now. We, I was under the thing that you were going to be starting this road this year or coming spring. The ribbons have all gone from the surveyors, the pink ribbons. So I wanna tell you that. My only advice to all of us who travel on that road would go to Red, rent some horses and a wagon. And the other thing is, get a covered wagon with some auction so we can ride and travel on that road. Because I am very dissatisfied with what I'm hearing tonight. We, I expected you guys to start this. We paid someone a lot of money to survey it, then it's gonna be surveyed again. And I think, no, putting a carrot in front of us to make us feel better. I know we live in central Massachusetts. We don't have Pittsfield and Springfield, and we don't have Boston close to us. The thing of it is, we're in the middle and we're not on the, we're on the other side of four-ninety-five. So we don't get very much out this way. So you guys up front are getting quite paid well. Our road is very unsafe. I've lived there for forty-two years and I'm sure there have been other people who live there far longer than I. And there hasn't been one thing done to that road except some culvert fixing and some tar that comes up all the time. I, I'm telling you, it's like a patchwork quilt out there. And the road, you've gotta ride in the middle 'cause if you don't, you go into the gutter and you get stuck 'cause either truck gets stuck in front of my eye. Now, this is ridiculous for you guys to be sitting up here telling us that we're not gonna have a road that's gonna be safe to drive on and to walk on in, what, four years? My dear man, I'm eighty years old. I am going to be dead. We hope not.
Well, it's a town road, so, uh-
I'm telling you, it's no good there.
I would applaud your town for getting started.
But, well, I think we've started long enough. It should be done right now. We pay enough taxes in this town and to the state, all of us do. And the people who own the trucks on this road also pay a tax so they can have some decent roads to pay on. With that ninety-whatever thing that they have going, you guys pay for that. And we get hardly nothing from that fund. And that's another thing. It's always the, what is the, what is it called? The ninety-something?
Chapter ninety.
Yeah, chapter ninety foot. We never get anything from that. So those guys, the truckies, they're paying for this road. They helped pay for the road, like we're paying, helping pay for it.
We're all paying for it.
And we also pay for your salaries up there to get your moving and get that road done for another year.
I'm glad you're here tonight, Mrs. Garvey. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to thank you for your comment. Uh, I think it's important to note, Bob Sozik and I, we're just down on Royalston Road. We're doing the best we can with the limited resources we have.
Well, it's unsafe.
So I just wanted to make that clear. It's, I, I know it's frustrating, but I think like Mr. Terenzini just indicated, the town administrator, we're making this project top priority. We're working with Mast DOT. I can assure you, if any one of you call our office, we'll be down there. We already met with, with a person on Royalston Road. We're more than happy to reach out. But if nobody calls us, sometimes if we don't hear it, we don't see it, we need to get communication. So feel free to reach out. I just wanted to put it out there. So I know it's kind of a side note, but I think it's important to understand, we do have chapter ninety, but it's very limited. It's very limited.
A patch.
So this, this is a great, Carter, if you wanted to elaborate a little bit too.
Um, Mrs. Garvey, I don't agree on-
I know we don't. That's why we-
But it's good we live in a democracy. Yes, ma'am?
Mike, you're not gonna be shortly.
My name is Susan Mitchell and I teach the ELL, you know, like with the gentleman who spoke previously. And I live at two-thirty Royalston Road. And like Mrs. Garvey, I've been there for forty-two years. But I do have a, yes, indeed. But I have a quick question. So these meetings, these monthly meetings that the new DPW director or this guy went to him along with, Adam, what exactly should they be focusing on at these meetings? What are you looking for in order to move this thing forward as quickly as possible?
I think in short, they need to convey what you've been saying today, what Mrs. Garvey's been saying, what everybody's been saying. Need to make the case to the MPO that this is a high-priority project that needs to happen. And that you are doing your part by advancing the design, so when they come up with the money, boom, you, you're ready to step right in and they can fund it and off you go.
Some follow, quick follow-up question. Someone mentioned something about speak to your congressman, your senators, and so forth. So are they to attend these meetings or do we get some kind of something in writing from them or just chat with them and tell them about this? How is that, is, is that going to help us?
Well, typically, in my experience, uh, you reach out to them, they hear you, they reach back out to y- your town officials and us at Mastat and say, "What's going on?" We explain the situation, and then they act. They, they, they use their influence to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks, that, that your project gains the attention it deserves.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
My name is Vilma Hendricken, H E N D R I C K E N. I live at two-sixty Royalston Road. Is there any, what's our next move? That's like, that's what I'm saying. Because like everybody said, that road is in bad condition. I've lived there for all but twenty-five years of my life. I have a road that goes through the woods in back of my house that's in better condition. And I kid you not, there are no potholes.
Yeah.
It's nice and smooth and you can go over it with a car. You don't need a truck. 'Cause there's no potholes in it. It's not a big road. It's not a long road, but you can, you can go through it with a car.
The letter to the, to address a previous comment in, in yours, getting a representative on board is probably one of the best things you could do and-
A state representative?
A state, a state representative, um-
Senator.
A senator, any, any, any political dignitary, you know, from, that, that sits in Boston, that, that'll go very far. And if you can do that, that's typically the, the tip of the iceberg.
See how unsafe this road is?
Uh, if, if you'd like to speak, you need to do that. Yeah, I haven't seen your hand up.
I kept raising it.
Oh, you gotta raise it when I'm looking at you. So, yes, sir, can you state your name?
The three-sixty-one Royalston Road.
Can you spell your last name for us?
D A R, I mean, T E R.
Thank you.
Can't they see, the states see how unsafe this road is? Even when they plow, it's unsafe. It's, it's an issue all the time. I mean, cars are in each other's lanes. I'm surprised there ain't more dead people on that road.
Right.
It's a major route.
We won't be dead.
Route sixty-eight.
So the next, another thing that you can do to answer Vilma's question, you can contact your elected representatives. You can send your local officials to the MPO meetings. That'll get the money attached to the project. And at the same time, you can, you can keep your engineers working to advance the design and get it through our process at Mastat. All three things are important. When the funding's programmed, then it will get programmed, but it'll get programmed quicker if you make some noise.
And listen, the stuff that you guys are saying, we hear it in dozens and dozens of communities everywhere. It's not, you're not alone in this battle and, and just keep in mind that there's thousands of miles of road that are in the exact same condition throughout the Commonwealth. Um, and it's not that the state's not looking at this one. Just, I mean, there's, there's thousands of roads just like this that the state, and you know, that, that our firm works on. Same exact situation. Um, and that's not, you know, it's not that the state's not looking at it. There's just, there's a lot to look at. So to, I, it's not like the, the town's being neglected. Um, I don't know if Jeff wanna-
Right. And, and it's not the state's discretion of the funding necessarily. It's the MPO. We do, we are a member of the MPO, but there's other members too, like the Regional Planning Agency sits on it, I think the FRTA. Um, there's a mayor's from like Fitchburg, your, your county. It goes out past Air, your region. So you have a few mayors, but then you have separate subregions. And I think you're represented in this region right now, I think, is Al Galant from Winchendon, I think, sits in for your region, so you can work with him. And, um, like I say, the town, I'm sure we'll, we'll work with them and everything, so.
Are you familiar with, uh, what's his name?
Al Galant.
Al, can you spell that? Al Galam?
Galant.
Galant, Al Galant.
Yes.
Do you know him, uh, Carter?
Yes. I think he represents the region, so.
So you wanna, you wanna get in front of Adam right away?
And what is his title? What, how would we get in touch with him?
He's the regional MPO representative for-
For the, for this sub-region.
For this sub-region.
Yes, I think he's the DPW director in Winchendon.
DPW director. And work through your, you know, work through Mr. T, uh, Terenzini, uh, to contact him. I mean, individuals calling him up don't have the same effect as using your town administrator to have him.
How many regions are there in this, in this state?
I beg your pardon?
How many regions are there?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, so he's one of thirteen.
Well, no, actually, no, your, your region is just the Monmouth, choose it region, which basically runs from Athol to, I'm not sure, District Three, no, maybe out to like Air, just past Air. You know, it's, you know, northern Worcester County mostly. So it goes into District Three. Um, I'm not sure exactly how much it's broken up, but I know there are subregions for some of the towns, smaller towns, is, they kinda group them. But then like Lemonster and stuff, the mayor sit in on the board, so.
So he's covering a pretty good-sized area.
Yeah, there's probably four or five towns, you know, it's kind of subgrouped.
Let me get this lady here. I'd like to ask you to speak.
Um, Claudine Wheeler, thirty-nine Gavin Road, um, W H E E L E R. Is it, right now, the projected cost is five million-ish?
Five-point-two roughly.
So is that coming from all state funding or is the town gonna have to like allocate money?
No, that's, that's state and federal funding.
Alright, so that's why this MPO is-
Mr. Terenzini.
Given us the privilege of paying for the design right-of-way.
Well, that's correct. That's the, that five-point-two million is the total federal participating construction cost. There's a lot of upfront costs which you guys are all paying. The town is paying for Fuston O'Neill. It's probably gonna run up about half a million dollars by the end. Beg your pardon?
We're paying for the design part of it?
That's correct.
And then, once we have the design part, then we're begging for money?
Yes. Right.
Okay.
Without the design, we're screwed. We need that to get the ball rolling, to get the funding.
So we, we all have to speak one at a time here and be a little more organized, uh, otherwise Dave's head's gonna explode. So this gentleman over here hasn't spoken yet. Why don't we?
Alright, Raymond Richard, three-seventy-five Royalston Road, R I C H A R D. Um, you're saying that we, we have this like twenty-five percent. How much longer do you think we get to the next level?
Great question. So twenty-five percent, uh, design actually represents, it's, it's the major milestone in the design process. So, and it takes the longest portion. So from here, we go to seventy-five percent design, a hundred percent design, which is basically considered, it's a final design stage.
When are you scheduled to submit seventy-fives?
Seventy-five percent design, I have the schedule. Uh, I can pull it up. So the, 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 this is, the earliest that this product, that the design can be completed, funding aside, whenever we get money from the MPO, um, we're looking at a, a fall of twenty-twenty.
So you're submitting seventy-fives in late June?
So, so late June-
Next June.
Uh, this coming June, um, is when we'll be submitting seventy-five percent design plans. And so this, the process is a lot faster from, basically, in from, from seventy-five or from twenty-five to final design is the same, is, that all happens in, you know, within a year and a half. The twenty-five percent from zero to twenty-five takes like two years. So you, the bulk of the design, I don't wanna call it done, but the, the, the longest part is over, so.
It's a misnomer. Twenty-five is not an accurate estimate of the amount of work they put in. They're about half-done now. They just need to refine the design, establish the grades, run the hydraulic, you know. They have to do the engineering and, uh, yes, sir, you've been very patient.
That, uh, I was told years ago, they already had it engineered. They had different designs and they changed them. Bud Chase and them screwed up. They were supposed to pick them up.
I don't know anything about it.
Now, what I've done is, I've blown three tires, I've taken, put new springs in two trucks. Everybody in this room is like, "Damn it, their vehicle's unnecessary." And most of these people are pissed off, but they're very polite.
Picking that up, picking it up.
Why can't that be put under an emergency situation with them? People's lives are in danger. We all drive down the middle of that damn road.
Yeah, yeah.
Whoever's, it's like playing chicken.
Right. Not a good, not a good situation at all.
And, uh, there's been accidents on the corner down there. It's just almost an emergency situation.
Yeah, it sounds like it, yeah.
Been hanging on and hanging on and, yeah.
Well, I applaud the town for advancing it, for, for, if, you know, this, it's not easy to save up the money for this design. It's a small community.
That bad, it's an emergency, safety hazard.
This is a local roadway. Uh, it's under your control, not ours. But I imagine the chapter ninety funding annually for Templeton is not four-hundred?
That's up twenty percent with the new law.
Yeah, so that goes really fast as, I apologize, as Bob would tell us, four-hundred thousand does not go very far. So, uh, to carve out enough to hire a real engineering firm and get this thing done is a big sacrifice. And, uh, I would applaud your officials for getting it underway. You made a great start. It's gonna get funded. It's gonna get funded. Especially if you keep, you know, it, keep expressing this kind of concern.
And you're not alone. Like I said, this, this same exact statement you just said is thousands of other residents in other municipalities. It's just, it's the same story. So the best thing you guys can do is the MPO and get it funded. It's not like this road is a, is a special case in the Commonwealth. It's, we see it, you know, day in and day out.
Communities all over the state.
And it's, there's only so much funding that, you know, the whole, whole state has as a region, you know, the Monmouth, choose it region. Do you know what the number is, Jeff? It's like eight million dollars every year that the whole region gets. So you're competing against Fitchburg, Lemonster, uh, Winchendon, Phillipston, um, Air. I mean, it's, imagine what those other people are feeling, just like you guys, trying to fight for this money. So, um, the squeaky wheel gets the, will get the grease, someone said earlier, and that's, that's really what we have to do right now.
Yes, ma'am?
Fitchburg, Lemonster have mayors. They have big city councils. What we have is our senators and our representative. Royalston Road hasn't gotten together as a group. We anticipated that the town, and they did do the twenty-five. We now maybe need to, as a caucus, get a hold of our senators, get a hold of our senator, our representative, and not let this just quell. We need to keep at it. You know, we can look for a location that's easy enough to get going and keep at it. Because other than this, I know for a fact, I'm chairman of the school committee. That's going to take money this year. So, I was a chairman, I'm sorry, I'm not currently. The point is, we can't let Royalston Road, they keep saying, oh, there's so many in the community. Well, we live on this road. That's what we really are advocating for. What we haven't done is get to the senator. Senator Goby has always done a very fine job. And we have to use them because we do not have mayors of Fitchburg, Lemonster, and we're not the size they are. But we have a road that needs attention. So, you know, if I send a letter to each one of you and we get a place to meet, we'll get contacts, maybe have her rep come, that's the way we do it. Because I don't care how many roads there are. This is the road that we need fixed for our people in this town. Let's do it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bob Mitchell, three twenty-six Royalston Road. I have a couple of questions. Number one, is there a website where we can go review the drainage maps? Because I know in this town, a few culverts have been overlooked before. And I would like to look at those plans. So is there someplace we can look at the maps? Or is this the only map we have right there?
Mr. Terenzini can answer this.
We certainly were going to, Carter Terenzini, town administrator. We certainly are going to build a page on the town's website, on the new website. All of us can see if we can do something with the current website that makes some sense so we can get those online. Nick, are these ours to...
You can keep those and then...
We can get these up to the public library. You talked to me about what is best for you all to access.
Well, I know they're here now. I can come here, that's fine.
We can keep them here in town hall. Let me know what works best for you. Some folks like to go to the library, they'd rather come here. Some want to see it on the web. Let us know and we'll do our best to make those media sources available to you.
Okay, so I can look at those. The other thing I want to know, is there any reason why we could not, as a town, start reclaiming the road now? Because right now, there are parts of that road that would be better off if it were reclaimed and we're on regrind. I mean, there are several parts of that road that are that bad. That we would just be better off to tear the stuff up, reclaim it, and put it down as a base. You know?
I just directed it, your DPW director. Bob, do you have the plans? Did Fussin' O'Neill give you a set?
Yeah, I have a set of plans.
So you could probably arrange with Bob to take a look at them if you wanted.
Bob Sosik, director of DPW. Any concerns on the culverts? I know earlier, a couple of people mentioned culverts that might not be involved with this project. If they're not, I'm sure me and Nick will be doing some walkthroughs. And if it's not involved in the project, we will be looking in to replace those culverts, either through the town or grant programs. So they will be addressed. But I understand that the road is real bad, folks. Like they said, there's roads like this all over the place. But please, drive with caution. I don't want anybody to get hurt or see anybody get hurt. So use caution, use your head. We've been working out there and cars going by forty, fifty miles an hour. I mean, you got to use your head.
Yes, ma'am?
Maureen Joyal, two oh four Royalston Road, J-O-Y-A-L. The speed limit is forty. We're all traveling because of our cars. I drive a Mini Cooper. And we're all traveling at twenty.
Yep.
Cars and trucks are coming by at fast speeds. I met one coming around a corner on my side of the road. And I had to go to the side and got a flat tire and had to have an alignment for two hundred dollars. And who do we send these bills to?
The trucking company.
No, I mean, that truck went completely, you know, kept going. But I mean, the road is so unsafe and they're saying there's no accidents and stuff. Well, there's a lot in there misses.
Yeah.
And we've really, our lives are in, in everybody's hands who don't, you know, fix this. It's really scary, you know?
So we have to harness this, what you're all expressing tonight. You have to get that to Mr. Galant's attention in Winchendon there for his next MPO meeting. Because the MPO will program the funds to rebuild the roadway.
I didn't get an answer. I didn't get an answer on my, on my last question.
It's not for me to answer, it's for...
Why, is there some reason why we couldn't reclaim parts of the road and just put it down as a base?
Can you guys keep it down so we can conduct the rest of the meeting?
As I explained earlier, it's all done in phases. They're going to go through, they're going to do the drainage work. And they're going to be working on the shoulders and the roadway. You're going to be throwing money out the window. And they're going to move several utility poles and reset guidelines.
If we don't even get funded until twenty-four, we're talking six years here. I mean, at some point, we should say, this section is so bad that we would be better off with regrinds for four years while we're waiting for the funding than to just keep patching the potholes.
Well, the regrinds ain't going to last you four years. It'll be smoother.
DPW would have to be out there every month grading that thing and compacting it again. There's so much water out there. Yes, sir?
Three eighty-one Royalston Road, H-A-M-E-L. Just two things. First of all, twenty-six years in the fire department here in town. And I've traveled on that road a few times to my neighbors and to other communities mutual aid. I just talked to deputy chief this last week. They had a mutual aid call to self-Royalston. They, the ambulance cannot go more than twenty miles an hour on that road. So I just wanted to make that part of the public comment, the ambulance, you know. That's directly from the deputy chief. And I'm sure if the town officials talk, you know, reached out, they would confirm that. The other question is, what is, there was a recent repair of Route one oh one in Phillipston under something called the Mass Work Infrastructure Program because it was so bad. And it sounds like that, that is, is that the emergency fund people are asking about? Is that, or is that different than tips?
That's different than tip. That's a program I'm not familiar with.
Mass Works is generally allocated for economic development activities.
Mass Works?
Mass Works is an economic development stimulus grant funding program.
It's not like emergency.
However, however, there's, and I'm not saying Royalston Road, that it'd be a good applicant for that. But there's, sometimes there's ways you can say, you know, especially for the emergency vehicles, you can say, this is a critical link for emergency vehicles. And it's not, granted, that Mass Works grant program is extremely competitive. But there's certainly other grant opportunities that the town could research.
Mass Works is a good one too.
But Mass Works is, generally, it's limited to infrastructure improvements relating to an economic development activity.
However, this is...
The number in Phillipston was a lot less for more mileage. Maybe they didn't have the drainage issues we have.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I don't know, but it, you know, it looked like, you know, we could...
The deputy chief's statement is very compelling.